I know what does he mean.
Hey.
How you doing?
If we actually have this meeting.
Yeah.
Should I sort of thing to the off the uh.
Okay. All right, cool.
I will, I'll be quick.
All right.
How are you?
I'm doing well.
So I actually have never been to one of these that we don't have a forum. What happens?
Well.
Just keep calling the roll?
Yeah, just keep going on going. We have four minutes.
Ten? I got ten.
Yeah.
Count eleven?
Yep, we'll make it. It's gonna be. The car on. Who's her ass? You know, we know where you live and your house is here. Armor up. Yeah. Yeah. I said, you know. Thirty seconds. We don't have enough people.
I know. It's gonna be tight.
You know what?
What?
And I came, I wasn't gonna make it because I had my party back. This morning, but I went to the doctor and Greg picked me up and got me here. Oh, man, go rest, yo. Don't, don't get too excited.
That was ridiculous.
My heart, my heart was good. I threw this in the trash.
The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Boyd.
Mr. Clerk?
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Fourteen present. Quorum is still not established.
All right, Madam Clerk, wait a couple more minutes. I know some people are being held up in the hallway, but uh.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Rice.
Norah.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Fifteen present. You have quorum.
Quorum being. Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor John Watson from Maple Temple.
Those that have joined us in prayer. I'll quote from the Holy Scriptures. Let us love one another. For love comes from God. Everyone who loves has been born of God and knows God. Gracious God, Heavenly Father, we first are thankful for the progress we made as a city. You've given us resources and leadership. Yet we keep constant prayer before you for the family members in this community who have lost loved ones through violence. You have brought our destinies together as a community that we would meet and build our lives together. Touch our hearts that we may live according to your will. And be open to the leading of your gracious spirit. As we continue to progress toward a better future, remove from our minds all bitterness, all fear, and mistrust for one another. As we depart from all that divides us, allow your grace to impart to us a united purpose of spirit. Knowing that being one with you, we may be one with another. Today, may our spirit be of calmness. May our security be of the security of goodness. May our strength be the strength of humility, where each may live for all and all may care for each. Amen.
Give Pastor John Watson a big round of applause. Thank him for opening us up in prayer today. Dispense with line item three. Introduction of Honorist Alderman from twenty-third.
Yes, I'd like to have as my special guest, my good friend Greg Meyer, and also our past clerk Dave Sweeney.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, colleagues, and Mr. President, I'd like to have as my special guest Kelly McGowan from Evolve, and Demetrius Al Alfred from Firefighters Local Seventy-three, who they are housed in the beautiful Bevo District of the Fourteenth Ward. Thank you.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my special guest today, the Ninth Ward Democratic Committee Woman, Ms. Inez Bordeaux, and all the members of Action up there in the gallery. Welcome.
All right, welcome. Alderwoman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my special guest Kelly McGowan, uh, and also Kevin Bailey. And it was one more and I can't, Demetrius. Thank you.
All right, welcome now. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, we're gathered here on May twentieth. This is National Pizza Party Day. So find a place with a good pizza and enjoy yourself. On this day, the first speeding ticket was ever given out in New York City. The driver was going thirteen miles an hour, one mile an hour over the posted twelve mile an hour speed limit. I long for those days. But more importantly, on this day in nineteen forty-six, the Alderman from the twenty-third, his favorite person in the world was born. It is Cher's birthday. I'm surprised you're here. Thank you.
Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minute stated May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Alderman from tenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I move for approval of the minutes from May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Move about Alderman from the tenth, second about Alderman from the fourth and the fourteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda that has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Waterman Lake Special Business District. The appointment of Ms. Peter Talby. The appointment, the appointment of Ms., I'm sorry, of Lovelace. The reappointment of Mr. Eric Weber. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Waterman Lake Special Business District.
Members of the board, I would respectfully request that we adopt the mayor's, uh, Mr. Peter Talby, Ms. Deborah Lovelace, and Mr. Eric Weber to the Waterman Lake SPD.
It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-eighth and attain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from thirteenth and Alderman from twenty-third. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the DeBoliver Special Business District. The appointment of Ms. Stephanie Brown. The reappointment of Mr. Charles Wilks. I respect, I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize to the mayor's appointment to the DeBoliver Place Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I move to approve the mayor's appointment to the DeBoliver Place SPD.
Move by Alderman from the seventh, second by Alderman from twenty-third. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
Dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal counties? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal counties? We would dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill Thirty sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, providing for the transfer of one million dollars that the City of St. Louis intends to transfer from the Airport Development Fund through the Airport Contingency Fund into the Airport Revenue Fund in order to fund the airport's air service initiative program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four, which total estimate cost may not exceed three point four million dollars, providing for supplemental transfers containing the severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty-one sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on May eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from the K unrestricted, unrestricted district to the J industrial district in City Block Three, Four, 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 Six, Zero, One through Six, Zero, Five Athlon Avenue, so as to include the described parcel of land in City Block Three, Four, 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 and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty-two sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard pursuant to ordinance number seven, zero, three, 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 as amended by ordinance number seven, one, three, nine, four, and ordinance directing the director's streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the fifty-eight hundred block of Clements Avenue between the intersection of Clements Avenue and Goodfellow Boulevard and Clements Avenue and Hamilton Avenue, and on the fifty-five hundred block of Kate's Avenue between the intersection of Kate's Avenue and Bell Avenue and Kate's Avenue and Clara Avenue. Board Bill Thirty-three sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer pursuant to ordinance number seven, zero, three, 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 as amended by ordinance number seven, one, three, nine, four, and ordinance directing the director's streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the four thousand block of Eiflerberger Street. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Refer. Reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee Board Bill Thirty, to HUD's Committee Board Bill Thirty-one, to Streets Committee Board Bill Thirty-two and Thirty-three. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
We have none.
We dispense with line item fourteen and fifteen. Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, having voted on the prevailing side, I move to place Board Bill Ten on the perfection calendar.
I move, I move to reconsider the vote.
Move to reconsider the vote. Thank you so much.
That's right. It's been moved by Alderman from the thirteenth. Second about Alderman from the seventh, that we move reconsider the vote for Board Bill Number Ten on the third reading calendar. Third reading consent calendar to move it back to the regular perfection calendar. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman, Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Seventeen aye votes.
By vote, you stand the motion on Alderman from the thirteenth and move to reconsider the vote for Board Bill Number Ten. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill Number Ten from, remove it from the third reading consent calendar and place it on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill Ten sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance establishing the Holly Hills Special Business District pursuant to Section Seven, one point seven nine zero through seven, one point eight zero eight of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, and setting its boundaries, tax rate, initial rate of levy subject to the approval of the qualified voters and uses to which tax revenue may be put, creating a board of commissioners and containing the severability, effectiveness, and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the tenth, you now recognize to move for the perfection of Board Bill Number Two.
I move for the perfection of Board Bill Number Ten.
Been moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-seventh and the fourth. Alderman from the thirteenth, please proceed.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate everyone's time on this. I have to make a quick amendment to Board Bill Ten, page four, line seven. Uh, and Oliver, you should have this on your desk. This amendment changes the section regarding the board of the special business to what follows to be in line with state statute. So just cleaning up the bill a little bit. Again, really appreciate your time.
All right, would you like to make the motion to adopt Amendment Number One to Board, Board Bill Ten?
Thank you so much. I would, I make the motion to amend for, um, to adopt, amend Board Bill Ten with Amendment Number One.
Yeah, perfect. It's been moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, seconded by the. All right, Alderman from the, from the twelve. There's been, there's been a request for previous roll and no objection. Motion carries. Now what's before us is amended Board Bill Number Ten. Any discussion on the amended board bill? Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, will the Alderwoman from the thirteenth yield for questions?
Alderman from the thirteenth, we yield a question to Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, and I missed, I was not at the committee hearing on this. Alderwoman, could you just sort of tell us a little bit about uh, what this is, what, what Board Bill Thirty-three does, I'm sorry, not Board Thirty, Board War Ten? What it does, what you're hoping to accomplish with this SPD?
Thank you so much. Thank you for that question. Uh, so this SPD came out of a community effort in the Holly Hills neighborhood with a group of neighbors who wanted to have more dedicated funds for a few different categories in the neighborhood, including uh, beautification, infrastructure, and safety and security. All spent, split thirty percent with ten percent for administration. So a number of people in my community came to me with a petition to do this. Uh, they followed the process to uh, get the SPD on their end. So my role was, as alderperson, was to help them get it on the ballot. So what this bill does is that it places the Special Business District of Holly Hills on the ballot for the people in that district. It would go on the ballot. Um, I think they're hoping for August second, uh, so that's, that's what's gonna happen here. And it does take a majority of people within the district to pass it in order for it to go into effect.
Thank you. Um, and I heard you said thirty percent for safety, thirty percent beautification, ten percent admin. I missed the other thing. What was the third thing?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, okay. Uh, and Alderwoman, um, do you know estimated annual revenues that the Sid, the SPD will throw off?
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred K. Okay, and you mentioned safety. Uh, do you know what the, assuming this passes by the voters, what they have in mind for those safety funds?
That would be decided by the board of people, of, of people on the Special Business District. There is a neighborhood program in the thirteenth ward, which is beat officers walking a beat in Holly Hills. That's been something that's been recommended. One of the things that we've also talked about is honeysuckle removal in Crandlet Park. It's very hard to see through some of our valleys and dips in, in Crandlet Park, and the honeysuckle removal would make the park a lot safer. Um, Crandlet Park is included within the district. There's also desire for appropriate lighting that lights, say, the paths in the park uh, while not interrupting the overall, um, creation of light pollution.
And you mentioned beat officers. Would those be secondary police officers?
Yes.
Okay, and those, that's something the SPD is interested in funding?
That is something that came, was something that came up on the survey that neighbors did, yes.
And so those secondary officers would provide additional police resources in your neighborhoods, is that right?
Yes, walking officers, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm really happy you're doing this. I think this is a great idea. I know I've got a, an SPD and a CID in Soulard, and, and they've, they've really been helpful uh, with some of the crime issues we've had in the neighborhood, so good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Alderman from the thirteenth, you have any close?
Yes, thank you so much. And I do appreciate the questions. The Alderman from the seventh, they're really good ones. Uh, I think that it's really important to see the, the separation of expenditures that the neighbors have come up with. Thirty percent beautification, thirty percent infrastructure, thirty percent safety and security, ten percent administration looks a lot different than seventy percent security, ten percent beautification, ten percent infrastructure, and ten percent administration. So I'm very much looking forward to seeing what can be done really thoughtfully by a group of neighbors if this does pass in August. Uh, we have a lot of people in the neighborhood who care deeply about Holly Hills and want to make sure that it is a neighborhood that is well maintained and has as much resources for the community who've been working so hard over the years to, to make it the neighborhood that it is. Thank you.
We thank you, Alderwoman. It's been moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-seventh and the fourth that we perfect Board Bill Number Ten. All in favor signify by saying aye. Board Bill Ten as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. By your vote, you perfected Board Bill Number Ten as amended. Madam Clerk?
That's the extent of Board Bills for Perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill Number Five.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on motion for third reading consent calendar. There you go. That's you.
There's a horse in here. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the tenth and attain a second, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-seventh and Alderman from the fourth. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Stevens.
Alderman Stevens, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderwoman Peel, Alderman Todd, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Norahian, Alderman Con, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Grass, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Odenberg, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Con, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Seventeen aye votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion of Alderman from the 10th and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading reporter engrossments.
Board Bill five.
All other business being suspended, presence shall in open session affixes signature heretofore to then that these may become law. Alderman from 10th, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 10th and entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 7th and Alderman from the He'll take, oh, Alderman from the 3rd. Any discussion? All in favor Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 28 sponsored by Alderwoman Howard. Bevo SID proposed annual budget.
Alderwoman from the 14th, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 28.
Mr. President and esteemed colleagues, I'd like to have unanimous consent to pass resolution number 28, the Bevo Community Improvement District budget out. Thank you.
Here are no objections. Please proceed, Alderwoman.
This budget has been turned in and, and reviewed and everything seems to be in order. And for them to proceed, I would, would appreciate that we have the unanimous consent and the Bevo Community Improvement District can move forward.
All right. Would you like to make the move, make a motion to
I would like to make a motion to
Adopt resolution.
Adopt resolution number 28.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 14th and seconded by Alderman from 10th. Any discussion? Moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number 28. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading resolutions.
Second reading.
We have none.
Listen ladies and gentlemen.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, May 23rd, 2022, Ways and Means will have a meeting at 9:00 AM via webinar. Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, Ways and Means will have a meeting at 9:00 AM via webinar. Wednesday, May 25th, 2022, Ways and Means will have a meeting at 9:00 AM via webinar. Education and Youth Matters will have a meeting at 1:00 PM via webinar. Thursday, May 26th, full board meeting, 10:00 AM. To be determined.
Yeah, to be determined. I'll speak to that.
Friday, I'm sorry, Friday, May 27th, wear clothes due to Memorial holiday. That's the extent of the announcements.
All right. Any, any further announcements, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from 27th.
You hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to speak on behalf of Annie Malone. I want to thank the City of St. Louis that came out in groves. They didn't come out in numbers. They came out in groves. And so it reminded me when I was a little girl and used to watch Annie Malone go down Kennely Avenue to Tandy for the competition. So I wanted to thank St. Louis personally and let everybody know that we still getting calls congratulating Annie Malone about the good work that was done in regards to the parade. So thank you, St. Louis.
All right. Any, any further announcements, any further announcements? Before we move on to the last two items and adjourn, we're going to look at next week's full board meeting. We may have that meeting virtual. We may have it online. As you can see, you know, we're missing quite a few members today. And we did have a notification of someone who, who from our last meeting who ended up with COVID. So we probably are looking to have that next meeting next week virtual. So we would just want to make sure everybody's safe and that you have an opportunity to just take care of your health. So we will let you know. We'll be talking to the clerk and we'll let you know about that, what, what'll happen next week on that. Alderman from 10th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to excuse the following alderpersons for necessary absence. We have the first ward, the second ward, the sixth ward, the eighth ward, the sixteenth, the nineteenth, the twentieth, the twenty-second, the twenty-fifth, and bringing up the rear, the twenty-sixth ward.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the 10th and entertain a second on that motion. Was that the? Okay, I could, seconded by Alderman from the third and and Alderman from the 27th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And also, the other challenge that the clerk has noted in these chambers is that we have zero ventilation and nowhere AC or anything. So with the zero ventilation, it's just a ripe area for, you know, COVID to continue to move. We have the one fan in the corner that probably is doing more harm than good. Alderman from 10th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn to Thursday, May 26th, 2022, 10:00 AM with the site to be determined.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from 10th and entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 4th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.